If I could get a call, a roll call, please.
Michelle Jefferson.
Here.
Here.
Megan Benson Moreau.
Present.
President.
Here.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Terry Osserson.
Here.
Excellent. Tonight's meeting, members of the audience are welcome to ask questions, share insights on committee, the whole agenda items as they're being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your questions or ideas. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda items being considered. Tonight, item C, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item two tonight is our board reorganization, and that happens every year. And so tonight, we will start out with the election of our board members. And tonight, we'll start with the first position of president. Do we have any nominations for president?
I'll nominate you, Nathaniel.
I'll second.
Okay?
I'll nominate Megan Benson Moreau.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Do we have any nominations for president? Do we have any nominations for president? All right, so now we will...
Break the ballots. Oh, no.
All right.
Mrs. Robati will distribute ballots and vote for one, correct, Mrs. Robati?
Yes.
Okay. And she'll be around to let those ballots up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We can continue with the rest, right? Or do you want to switch?
We can.
You good with get the rest of the positions and then switch seats? Okay, very good.
All right, next position. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Nathaniel Milton. I second.
Do we have any nominations for vice president? Do we have any nominations for vice president? All right. So we don't do ballot on this one, just...
A move for unanimous vote for Nathaniel.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you. Next position is clerk. Do we have any nominations for clerk?
Nominate Paul Johnson.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any nominations for clerk? Do we have any nominations for clerk? All right. You want to do just the unanimous?
Move for that.
All right.
A move that we post nominations and have a unanimous vote for Paul Johnson.
All right, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All, congratulations. Treasurer. So do we have any nominations for treasurer?
I nominate Marsha.
Second.
Do we have any nominations for treasurer? Do we have any nominations for treasurer? All right, I make a motion that we just do unanimous vote. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. Now we will reorganize the chairs.
Take your sign with you there.
Okay.
Grab that.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, and thank you to Nathaniel for his past year of service. It's greatly appreciated as president. And so now we'll move on to presentations. So letter A, student staff community recognition.
We have? We have...
Two this evening?
We have two of them here.
Okay. Okay. First, we'll have Trish Vasquez, Caitlin Resenthal, Jessie Robati, Sarah Hanson, Kristen Tisher, Stephen Fulton, Mark Nwets, and Hugh Miller, please. Thank you. The Spring 2023 referendum was a challenging and an effort, effort in an environment where citizens are experiencing record inflation, operating in a small budget. The campaign required a wide variety of work by numerous people. Despite these challenges, the referendum was successful, allowing ASD to remain a great place for students to learn and employees to work. This initiative serves a powerful example of the great things people can accomplish when they work together. Thank you for going the extra mile to help the referendum be successful. Many hands make it in light work. All nominated by Dr. Aslan. Thank you all very, very much. All right. Up next, we will have Regan Kohler and Ben Dryden, also nominated by Dr. Aslan. The district recognizes our local media for playing an integral role in getting information out regarding the Spring 2023 referendum. The district is grateful for the partnerships with local media that helped spread the word to the community and beyond. Thank you for your support of our students, the families, and the school community. Okay. Gotcha. All right. All right, moving on to item C. Okay. Okay, so on item B was the referendum project update. There was no new information to report, so we'll move on to item C, the presentation and discussion forest management on school, city property. Okay, we'll call Renee up, please. Thank you.
I see the information's on the board, but does anybody want a paper copy? Or you have it on a computer?
Yep.
I'll take one.
I'll take one too, Renee, since you brought it.
So I know certain folks in the DNR have encouraged forest management on the school property and the city. Folks from the city have approached the DNR and said, can we do something out there? A lot of the trees are falling over, different concerns. Before the DNR gets involved, we're not allowed to set up timber sales or do certain types of work on what, I know this is sort of public, but it's for all practical purposes. For our purposes, it's private property, and we can't do that because we're taking business away from private forest consultants who get paid to do that kind of work. So in order for the DNR to be involved on the school forest, school property or the, and/or the city property, the school and/or the city would need to enroll in the school forest, school slash community forest program through the state. It's a partnership between the state of Wisconsin and the Outdoor Education Center at UW Stevens Point, or kind of the Department of, the College of Natural Resources. It's been in existence almost 100 years, the program. There's 200 and some community slash school forests in the program statewide. It lists the benefits there of the program, but there are people who can help with outdoor programs if any teacher is interested but doesn't quite know, you know, have, want some ideas or want some help there. And then, of course, it opens up the door for the DNR to provide management and timber sale assistance on the property, be it school or community in the case of the city. The school or the city could elect to go forward with forest management, independent of the DNR. So I don't want you to feel like, well, if the school choose, chose to consider forest management, it doesn't have to be through the DNR. You can hire a private consulting forester to do that. The DNR would do it for free. So by enrolling in the program, it's free. You, the board, would pass a resolution that says, yes, we're interested in doing this. I would develop a management plan within one year of that. The management plan, so I have talked to some folks from the Rails on Trails organization, also Brian Crum and Ryan McKinney from the bike group. There are concerns that a timber sale is going to interfere with a lot of the trails out there, because I think that's one of the biggest uses of the school and the city forests are the excellent trails. I would say two things. One, that loggers are pretty good at working around trail systems. And two, like a management plan or a timber harvest wouldn't be done by the DNR as if, okay, this is the way the harvest needs to be done, and this is the way it's gonna, we're gonna do it. We would work in conjunction with those groups to make sure the management was, I guess, satisfactory for everybody. You know, it's not a, we're gonna tell you how to do it type thing. I would be writing the plan and setting up the sale, and happy to work with anyone interested in having input on that. We can sure be flexible about where we cut and what we cut and different methods. But do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I got one. Have you seen the forest out there? Have you walked through it? Is it ready to be cut now? Or is it over, over ready? Or should it be, what's, what's happening out there?
It's about at ready. There is, if you flip it over the map, there's the southern part that long, 20, and then into there, that's oak. That would be ready for a thinning. We'd recommend a thinning in that area. The northern 40 acres, which is kind of the brushy stuff, there's a lot of big, wolfy, beautiful oak there, but the rest is really brushy. There wouldn't be much management recommended there. The pine, there's a little bit of a pine plantation kind of to the east that's ready for a thinning. So we would, the, the management plan would recommend thinnings.
Mm-hmm. How about plantings?
I would love to plant trees. I love to. So I think some of the north end, where the slopes come down to the service road and then down to the high school, there's certainly room for some planting in there.
So the forest management plan would be written by the DNR then, by you? And that would be a no-cost thing?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm happy to have input from anybody that wants to provide input.
So what I understand is there's some oak wilt taking place? So are we past, that would be something in the fall to start taking care of oak wilt, or?
Yeah, so I haven't seen, I'm on that, that trail honestly, at least once a week because I live next to the middle school, and I jog or, I used to have a dog and take a dog back there all the time. But I haven't found any oak wilt on the city or the school property yet. But if it were found, yes, we would help with trying to contain that and keep it under control. There's also oak wilt restrictions then where no timber harvesting would be allowed, April 15th to July 15th, in order to avoid spreading it.
Where would the income from the timber harvest go to?
Well, that's up to you.
Uh-huh.
We don't, the DNR wouldn't have any obvious...
If it was just a school forest rather than a, could it be just school forest versus community and school, or?
It can.
Is it property owned by the school only, or not? Does anybody know?
Yes.
I was gonna say, when I, when I look at this, we need to clarify that the school district owns the northern half, the square part. The southern part that goes left and right, that's city property.
I think I have it correct. The city owns, if you can see the ball field there?
Yep.
They own a strip that goes to the south there, all, almost all the way to Elm Street.
Okay, just the strip along College. Right here. But who owns this bit right here?
This, in the blue is, well, and I do believe you own that.
We'll get this, we'll get this map up on the screen.
I guess, I guess, let's get the map up first, then we'll have the conversation. Can I, can I ask another question before we, while we're waiting for that? One of the things I've noticed about the woods up there is that there's the massive amounts of buckthorn invasive species. So are we gonna do anything about that?
It would certainly be recommended that you do something with it in the, well...
Other than goats, what are we gonna do?
It would take an investment of two things. It'd take money to pay someone to do it, and it is fairly expensive. Two, there's been tossed about between Rails on Trails and other group, groups of forming like a friends organization that might be willing to take on some of that.
Because some of it's really big.
I know. And it basically, it comes down to money and putting money...
It doesn't belong there, and we need to deal with it. Every other landowner's dealing.
I agree. And, you know, I do think there are different points of view out there on buckthorn. One is that on certain parts of your property, it would be considered so far gone that it would take a massive amount, a massive effort, and a massive amount of funding to control it. But I do think especially that 20 acres to the west there, that kind of narrow, narrower part that goes out, it's not present there yet, and it would be great to take an area and say, we are gonna keep it out of this area. And maybe some other areas, you say, you know, it is so far gone that it's not worth the effort anymore. And again, that's up for debate. Different people have different ideas. Some folks say it's here to stay, and there's nothing we can do about it. We might as well just let the habitat adapt. And other people say, kill it all and do your best. So I don't know what the answer is.
Okay, at least you're aware of it going into it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a mess.
It is. It is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Terry?
So I think there's, it would depend on the teachers and stuff at stake here, but is there opportunities for students to be involved with your writing of the management plan or air quotes, job shadow?
Absolutely. I'd love that. Yeah. And that's true anytime, too, anybody has interest in being a forester. We're all, yeah.
Is the city also considering management of their?
They are, and I think the answer I kind of got was, well, let's see what the school board does. So, yeah.
Is there interest expressed with city personnel?
We just, just haven't, haven't pursued it any more than the initial discussion with Renee and city personnel and district personnel. So, yeah, very conceptual at this stage. A question, if I may. You know, obviously, the board's gotta gather stakeholder input on, on such a plan. Upon the board taking action to approve moving forward with such a thing, what would be, like, how long would it take to put a plan together like that? And on the heels of that, how long would it take to organize a timber sale? Yeah, so it would take me a week, forty, let's say roughly 40 hours to cruise it all and come up with a rough draft of a management plan. So it wouldn't take too long. I would get it done over the summer for sure. But then, depending on job shadows or interests and different meetings to go over it and review it and maybe adjust, I might give it a few months, but I would think by the fall, depending the school board meets over the summer or interest, yeah. So I would hope by fall, we could have something, you know, both written up and reviewed and, and kind of finalized. I may be optimistic. If, I think part of that has to be like an education plan, too, which doesn't have to be super complex, but maybe teachers saying, yeah, we want to use it this way or that way. So things always take longer than you think. But I think it should go fairly quickly. So we'd probably, at the time, most optimistic be in maybe 2024, before any harvesting would take place? Oh, yeah. So then the harvest part of it, once a plan is written, the timber sale is established, we could do that over the fall, and then it's sent out for bids. It could be sent out for bids any time of the year. But then, once a bid is accepted, the logger typically is given a two- to three-year window to finish that sale, and that gives them the opportunity to line it up with different areas they're working in and different jobs and stuff. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
What would happen if we can't find a logger that's willing to do it? Because of the size, maybe, or oftentimes that does happen. I know the county sends out theirs for timber sales, and sometimes they don't get it at all.
Yeah, that's possible. Then you try again in six months or next year or something. Yeah.
It's 84 acres, so I would imagine somebody'd be interested in it.
I think so. There's, you know, it's a little bit of a more challenging sale, I guess, with all the trails and stuff. But you're right. I think there's enough wood there that, I think it would sell personally. But to get, I think you asked, does anybody know for sure?
I just looked it up.
I may have seen it wrong, but I thought there was a couple acres there along College Street that the school also owned. Does anybody know for sure?
What I'm seeing on College Street is city property. It used to be school district, you know. But you're right, the strip going across is all ours.
Yeah.
And going down is city, there's a school district down south of LaFollette, and the west side is...
Yeah, I think that little square might be yours.
Yeah, that's it.
Is that tax ID 50561? Ends with 561.
Is there any other questions at all for Renee? Any other discussion?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So are we waiting just basically for the city to say yes, and us say yes, or are they waiting for us to say yes first?
I think they're waiting for you to say yes.
We'll bring that up at the next meeting, maybe.
Okay.
Has there been any other discussion or feedback? This was the first.
Correct. I guess I would wonder, would this be a good source of income for the schools, or would the expenses to run this forest and manage it outweigh the, the benefits? I just, I don't know for sure. Renee, could you maybe address that as far as?
Well, so the only expense that you would incur with, you wouldn't have any expenses for the timber sale because it's gonna be managed, it would be if you were in the school forest managed by the DNR, so the income would be all yours. What you decide to do with that income, and then if you choose to conquer or fight the buckthorn or not, would be, the buckthorn is the one expense that I can...
So the buckthorn wouldn't necessarily be managed by the DNR. That's something the school or the, we would have to take care of.
Yeah. If you chose to, and again, signing up, though, for the community school forest program doesn't obligate you to do anything about it.
Right.
And there are even foresters and other resource professionals who say, some places, it's, it's not worth your, we're gonna have to learn to live with it. But so, no, don't, don't, and don't feel like if anything is written in the plan, it's all, you know, you should, or these are some different options. Even when a management plan is prepared, the school board isn't tied, the school isn't tied to any of it. You can say, well, yeah, let's do that, or let's change this a little bit, even if it's in the plan.
Okay.
But I don't foresee any, you know, required expenses, so to speak.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, we're gonna be moving on to item D to discuss the preliminary budget. Trish?
Can I ask a question quick before? Are we moving that forest thing to the next meeting, or are we gonna make a decision then on it or not?
There's nothing to move forward at this time. It was just a presentation, so we have to wait for more information, correct?
I, I, yeah. I, I think you're gonna wanna get, you're gonna wanna create an opportunity for community members to provide input on this before you take any further action. But once you've done that, then I, I, I think you can go forward and whatever the board's decision would be, go forward saying, hey, we, you know, we've given all stakeholders the opportunity to weigh in on this.
And also, I think to keep in mind that designating the property as a school forest doesn't mean we necessarily would adopt the plan. That we wouldn't have to do the timber harvest, but we could be designated as a school forest and take advantage of some resources for education.
Without knowing what's actually out there, without doing the survey of the forest, we're not gonna know where we're gonna go. So I think the first step is just to get somebody to...
Well, I was just wondering, on the decision, should it be a school forest, or shouldn't it be? We gotta decide that first, right? Before we decide what to do about it. We gotta give it a yes or no, so the city knows where we're at.
I, I would say that would be the next step, because, you know, if, if the board were to say, yeah, it's gonna be a school forest, then you do have the ability to take advantage of having the DNR develop that plan at no cost to the district.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Sorry, Trish, go.
Okay, no problem.
Continue.
It's been past practice here in Spooner to bring a preliminary budget to the board in the early spring for adoption, so planning can begin for the new year and contracts can be issued in good faith for the following year. With 2324 being the first year of the new biannual budget, we have some unknowns until the state budget is approved. The Fund 10 General Fund, which is up here on the screen, preliminary budget in front of you is broken down by revenues on top and expenses on the bottom. The estimated revenues for the year are $17,557,571. This number reflects the recently passed referendum funds and an estimated $350 per pupil increase on the revenue limit as proposed in the state budget. The expenses you see are broken down by object codes. The salary line reflects the board-approved 4.4% increase steps and lanes for staff, and this lane, or line also includes a decrease of two FTE from vacant positions in the district and restructuring of a couple positions at the high school level. The benefits line reflects the board-approved changes to health, dental, and long-term disability insurances. The administrative team has been working to reduce expenses to get us where we are, so there is little to no impact on students. As you can see, at the bottom, we are projecting a $261,000 deficit for the year. The district received $109,745 in back-to-school supplemental aid from Governor Evers this last fall, and those funds were not budgeted for use in this current school year, so they're available to help, help offset that deficit for next year, which would bring us to that bottom number of $152,074 deficit. number of $152,074 deficit, which could be covered by fund balance. And as we move towards October annual meeting and setting the budget for the 2324 school year, administration will continue to work on trying to balance the budget and then begin work on the next year's budget. You're being asked to receive this information and bring it to the regular scheduled board meeting in May, and the recommendation from administration would be to adopt the preliminary budget.
Trish, would you, would you break down from after benefits, just kind of what those mean, please?
Sure, yep, the 300 personal services, that's where your open enrollment is and your busing, your student transportation. Supplies, that's any general use within the district, classroom supplies, office supplies. Non-capital equipment, when you're buying equipment, maybe laptops, Chromebooks, that kind of thing, or if other departments need smaller equipment. Leases, that's your rentals, insurance and adjustments, that's your property liability, workers' comp. And then your transfers is our transfers between Fund 27 and Fund 50 to balance those funds. And your 900s and above, that's others, that's memberships into organizations and things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have consensus to move this, to adopt this, to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Trish. Okay, moving on to item E, discuss the 2324 board meeting dates. Has everyone had a chance to review those? We do have consensus to move those to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And then moving on to item F, discussion of the 2324 open enrollment applications. Mr. Hopkey?
All right, just taking a look at the open enrollment, I just want to go through some of the history here. Right now with the 2324, it looks like we've got 50 students that are projected as new open enrollments out. Taking a look at that, it's, it's broken down, it's, three of them are current students that we have, 47 are students that we've never seen before, or they're transferring from one school district to another, and we haven't seen them at all. It's kind of an interesting thing, even if they're an open enrollment out to one district and they go to a different, it still populates as an open enrollment. Okay? So just some things to consider there. If we look at some of the historical pieces with the 2223, what we had with some of our projections was 52, or it actually turned out to be 48 students that were projected, and then 28 that actually did move out or open enroll out, and we had nine of those, 48 stay. And 2021, 2022 was 35 students that were open enrolling out. We had a few duplicates, and six of them actually stayed. When we take a look at open enrollment in, it's been somewhat consistent there. If we look at the 2223, what we had is we had new projection for open enrollment in was two. What we actually had happen were two, and it turned out to have a total of 41. What we're looking at for the projections here for 2324 is 11 students open enrolling in with two of them being special ed students. So some fairly consistent things, and I was just taking a look at some of the information in there as far as, you know, trying to find some trends and whatnot. And I really wanted to hone in on our 4K to four grades, because I think that's where you see a greater tendency of students move in or out. What we had, just starting from the 2021 school year, we had 77 4K for open enroll out and 13 in. 2122, we had 77 out, 15 in, and then this past year, we had 89 out and 19 in. So there's a slight uptick with that out versus in, looking at that grade level. Most of the others were fairly consistent, so. Anywho. So I can't necessarily say that I have my finger on a trend here, other than taking a look at that slight uptick with that 4K to four, so.
It looks like a piece of 4K out in this list. Need?
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get after that, and it's, having been in the area for a while, and I noticed a lot of names that are open enrolling out to districts where they've either attended or have a close affiliation as well, or they have working relationships in those communities, so.
I didn't hear what you said, Marcia. Did you ask for the reasons why they're going out?
Yeah, just that's a.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, too, do we, do we know why they're leaving?
Back down. Elementary enrollment, I would think, and I'm just wondering.
So, so this is the primary application period. Is there another application period prior to the start of the fall?
There is the alternate application period that runs later on, summer through fall.
So during this primary period, are parents, do they list a reason for seeking open enrollment, or is it just requesting open enrollment?
It's just requesting open enrollment at this point in time. I know the alternate, you do get that rationale there, so.
I think, my thought is, when I've seen these over the years, I think one of the things in the 4K or the pre-K programs here is that oftentimes, these are parents that are working in those communities and can bring the children to the community with them when they go to work and pick them up after.
Right.
Oftentimes, it's a daycare.
Yeah, no, any calls, when I was doing, when I was principal, making calls to those individuals that were opening and rolling out, that was exactly it. They were working in those communities, it was a convenience thing for them.
It's easier for mom to pick up the child at the 4K and bring them back home with them, rather than race down here, pick them up and treat them and get back.
Right.
Can you restate what you said about, I'm not sure if I quite understood what you said about how, it wasn't a direct correlation or anything, but the number out versus the number in, there was an increase or, so there was the basic number of applicants versus the actual number that came to us and the applicants going out, and then the actual number of people went out. Could you restate what you said the la, it's been too long ago, I was trying to hold the question in my mind, but it was one of the last things you said before you went to the red book.
Okay. I guess what I was looking at were, it was fairly consistent up until this past, or till recently, we just saw this slight uptick with open enrollments in, projection of 11 with two super, or two special ed students, and the projections out, we're looking at 50 students out, six, six are special ed students, three are current. And what I was talking about is, those numbers take into account students that were in, say they were enrolled or open enrolled to Grantsburg, and then they changed and open enrolled to Siren. That still counts as a new open enrollment, so, because what we, what we saw is that 47 out of those 50 projections were students that we've never seen before, so. I don't know if that's hitting it.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go on.
All right.
Any other questions? No? Okay, so we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. All right, item G, discuss restructuring of the high school non-certified positions. Dennis, Trish?
So I don't know if you've ever heard this, but change brings opportunity. So just to give you a background, prior to this movement, we had the full-time person in the media center, halftime guidance counselor, administrative support, and halftime attendance, truancy in the high school office. So what we've done is combined, still have the media center person, and we've combined the position of guidance counselor secretary and truancy and attendance plus quite a few other things. So why? It's cost neutral, and we don't, we have the, what I would call an outstanding talent pool of individuals. What it ends up doing is, we ran a little experiment that I brought to you earlier this fall when we lost our media specialist, and I put, Mrs. Tisher in the media center, and she was guidance counselor secretary, if you remember that discussion. After further review, it worked out pretty good, and that's what we were trying to figure out, is this something we could do, is this going to be effective in what we're trying to do? And Mrs. Tisher is a pretty talented gal, so she obviously was able to do it quite well. So with this move, Mrs. Salo will go down to the media center, and Mrs. Tisher will move up to the high school office. She will be attendance, guidance counselor, secretary, and she'll fill some of the needs of what our central office is lacking. A lot of times, people come in our building and are looking for transcripts and looking for, where do we go? She'd be available to assist people as they come in to that process. Both Mrs. Crispin and Mrs. Tisher have been trained in Skyward makes us, and that's our pupil, it's our whole process. And again, that, once again, makes our office much more efficient. The other big factor is, is that when we had a halftime secretary in that position, if one of them was called out, because as, as we know, we are functioning as well as we can medically with, with our school nurse, who's doing a fantastic job, but she can't be everywhere, so there's times they'll get called out for student situations, and now we'd always have someone in the office, which, again, especially in the afternoons, became problematic. So we were able to solve this in a cost-neutral situation, and all parties are in a situation to really maximize the benefit of their skill set in the high school office and in the rest of our building. Questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, we have consensus to move that to the regular meeting?
Yep.
Yep, okay. All right, moving on to item H, the 301690 day planning, everyone had a chance to review that information? Any questions? No? Okay, we'll receive and place that on file then. And then item I, the financial update. Dr. Esden?
Financial update for the month of March 2023. The district had income of $534,769.56, largely on an ESER III claim and a special education reimbursement claim. The district had expenditures of $1,748,066.14 cash on hand at the end of March 2023, Contrast that with March of 2022, the district closed March of 2022 with $5,995,405.61.
All right, any questions? Okay, we'll take that information, receive and place that on file. And item I, approval of vouchers, do we, have everyone had a chance to review that? We have consensus to move that to, as part of the incentive agenda for the regular board meeting?
Yes.
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 Okay, and then moving on to item four, to convene in a closed session, do I have a motion?
So moved.
One moment, please. Convening to close, do we, item four is to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19 dot 83 to consider the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Per. Let me get a roll call for that, Jesse, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
We are in closed session.
Yep. Time now is seven, I'm sorry, 6:34. During closed session, the board took action on two different items. The first item was the board acted on employee contract. And the second one, the board considered renewal of a work assignment for an employee, and that was the board's actions during closed session.
Okay, and then on to item six, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. All righty.
Have a good evening.